I'd like to call the June 2nd, 2021 Meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We are conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom members of the public. New members of the public may view and listen to the meeting online through the city's website as noted on the agenda. Please join Commissioner Watts as he leads us in the flags loop.
Okay, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Yes, but first as a reminder for staff consultants and applicants, please turn your video off and put yourselves on mute until your item comes up. Moving on to our roll call, Commissioner Trecio.
Here.
Commissioner Trulie Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Watts.
Here.
And Commissioner Yeomans.
You.
We don't have a public comment. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
The city has received no public comments for items not on the agenda. If, or excuse me, a total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the planning commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. Any public comments that were accepted via email or by mail will be read into the record. Details associated with viewing the meeting, ADA accommodations, and submitting public comments were available on the agenda and on the city's social media platforms.
Thank you, and all managers listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine. All will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission request specifically guidance to be removed on the calendar or separate action. There's an echo going on somewhere.
Perhaps if we can have everyone mute who's not, when they're not speaking, that will help the echo.
Anything different?
Sounds better.
I don't know. One is a recommendation for the approval of the action minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Do you have a motion and a second?
I saw move.
We have a motion and a second. Communities, the commission secretary will now conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Trecio.
Yes.
Commissioner Trulie Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Watts.
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeomans. So motion passes four zero with the motion by Commissioner Trulie Trejo and second by Commissioner Yeomans. Sorry, I've got my next part here for the public hearing. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before or during a public hearing in support or opposition to the approval of the projects in the manner prescribed and the important notice at the top of the agenda. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at prior to or at the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal of the planning commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within fifteen calendar days after the planning commission's decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is planning application number PA two zero dash one two one nine and PA two zero one four five nine. A development plan application for three hundred and seventy-four unit multifamily community considering consisting of track map for the creation of thirteen building lots and one open space lot with within planning area twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the Roy Flower Ranch specific plan. Do we have any staff report?
We do. Good afternoon or good evening, planning commissioners. As you can see, we're gonna spend some time together tonight with a bunch of Woodside projects. We will work through them. You'll hear a lot of the same things from project to project in terms of architectural elements. Try to get through it rather quickly, but the first one up, as stated, is Somers Bend Density Core Project. It's planning application numbers PA twenty dash one two one nine and K twenty dash one four five nine. It is a development plan to allow for the construction of a three hundred and seventy-four unit residential community as well as a tentative track map, which is ten of track map three eight oh one eight for the creation of thirteen buildable lots and one open space lot. Little bit of project history, just gonna do this once tonight, bring everyone up to speed is where we are. Since two thousand seventeen, the planning commission has approved or recommended for approval a general plan amendment, two specific plan amendments, five ten of track maps for one thousand and seventy-one single family lots, a park and ride, two private recreation centers, and eight home product reviews, which are for, which are for four hundred and eighty-three lots. On top of that, at the conclusion of tonight's meetings, assuming everything does get approved, we would be up to seven hundred and twenty-nine home project review lots and three hundred and seventy-four units associated with this project, which would bring the total up to one thousand one hundred and three total approved approved units for phase two of Somers Bend slash Roy Flower Ranch. Project location. Also, we'll just show this one time tonight. Everyone, I think by now knows where the project is. It's there in the northeastern part of the city. You can access it by Marriott Hot Springs Road, Nicholas Road, or Butterfield Stage Road. This is a closer view of the project area, and this shows where the density core project is located, which is in PA's twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the specific plan. Little bit of analysis on how we got here to have residential within these two planning areas. Originally, the density cores, we call it, was originally proposed as educational sites for the Temecula Unified School District. When we did that specific plan amendment in two thousand eighteen, it allowed for residential development on either or both of the school sites. Should the district determine they did not need to construct schools, provided that all of the following were met. One, the district had indicated in writing that they were no longer interested in using planning areas twenty-eight or twenty-nine of school sites. The city did receive a letter on August twenty-fourth of two thousand eighteen documenting that the district no longer needed to acquire the school sites. Second, the maximum density of dwelling units with any one or both of the planning areas combined was a maximum of twenty dwelling units per acre. The project proposed tonight is eleven point eight five dwellings per acre, so below the twenty unit maximum. And then, of course, the total number of residential units for the entire specific plan, which includes the already built out portion, does not exceed two thousand and fifteen units. With the units proposed as this, as part of this project, the total units for the specific plan will not exceed that number of two thousand and fifteen. Again, this is obviously located in the Roy Flower Ranch specific plan. The project is thirty-one point five six acres. It does encompass three hundred and seventy-four single family homes that is broken down into a hundred and seventy-eight townhomes, which is thirty-one two-story, four-plex, five-plex, and six-plex buildings that range from one thousand two hundred and forty-one square feet up to one thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet. There are also one hundred and two bungalows, which are arranged in thirty-four two-story, three-pack clusters, which I'll show you what that looks like here in a little bit, as well as, and square footage on that is fourteen hundred and ninety-eight square feet to eighteen hundred and fourteen square feet. And then finally, there are ninety-four duplexes, which are two-story buildings that are arranged within seventeen motor courts, and I'll show you that as well. Square footage on those ranges from seventeen hundred and twenty-seven square feet all the way up to two thousand one hundred and forty-six square feet. Amenities within the project include a dog run, recreation areas, which include a ninja warrior course, play structures. There's bocce ball, there's barbecue areas, there's lawn areas, and there's a green belt paseo, which we will show, I'll show you what all these things look like. In terms of parking, eight hundred and sixty-three parking spaces are required for the specific plan. Seven hundred and forty-eight of those are enclosed within the garage and then a hundred and fifteen uncovered. The project does propose a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces, so five spaces above are required, and they do meet the seven hundred and forty-eight enclosed, and then the five extra comes in uncovered, which are located throughout the project site. So here is the overall site plan of the project. In order to gain access to the project, you have the primary entry, which is a full movement entry. It's right in the middle of the project. It leads directly into the great lawn, which was one of the large amenities, and then the secondary entry over on the left side of the screen, as well as a full movement entry. Terms of amenities, we talked about earlier, they're right in the middle. You have the great lawn area. Directly to the left of that, you have the ninja course, there's the lawn area and a barbecue area. Moving further to the left, you have the bocce ball and more open space lawn, and then on the bottom of the project, you have the dog run. Zooming in on each of these amenity areas, on the left of the screen is that great lawn. There's an open turf play area, barbecue area, play structure, shade structure, and bike racks. And then on the right side of the screen, you have the dog run, which does contain a dog fountain, seating area, and then shade will be provided from the landscaping that surrounds the dog run. This is the north ninja warrior course slash lawn area. Over on the lawn area side, there's the barbecue areas, some open turf, some walking paths, and then you see on the pictures on either side, that's some of the elements of the ninja warrior course. There's additional elements to it. I just chose for, to show you here this evening. In addition to those amenities, there also are some loop trails, so you don't really have to ever leave the project while still being able to remain active and get in your morning or nightly walks there. And red on the outer loop trail, it's point eight four miles long, and then on the inner loop trail, it's point seven eight miles long. In terms of connectivity, starting on the far right, that is the connectivity to the private recreation center. On the far left is the connectivity to the sports park. What this allows residents to do is to be able to get to that private recreation center or get to that sports park without having to get into your car and get out on the loop road and drive to those areas. You can walk there directly from your house. And then there on the bottom of the screen is the direct access to the Long Valley Wash Trail, which gets you out onto the Wash Trail and then eventually, you know, into the city of Temecula Trail system. So this is the green belt paseo I discussed earlier. This is a really good aspect of the project. It extends the length of the project from the sports park to the private recreation center or from the private recreation to the sports park. What it does, it provides a walkable community amongst all the amenities and pedestrian connections. Zooming in on this in two different sections here on the top, you have the west side, which, you know, on the west side, you're not really crossing streets. You're not adjacent to a street, so in the area where you are crossing a street, there's decorative pavement. And then again, you have your turf lawn and some amenities areas that you'd be walking past. Here on the bottom side, which is the east portion of the project, you are located along the street. So what the applicant has done is there's an eight-foot walking path, and then there's the parkway strip that separates you from the street. So you're not walking directly on the street. You have a landscape buffer between you and the loop road that goes around the project. Terms of waste collection, I think we all know by now when we do these type of communities, trash becomes a subject. So on trash day, the minimum number of parking spaces per the specific plan are required to be available. How the applicant was able to make meet this is they worked with CRNR, which resulted in each unit will have one sixty-gallon trash bin, one sixty-gallon recycling bin, and then there will be two community organic enclosures within the project. At those enclosures, there'll be signage that discusses what should and should not be put into those enclosures or into the dumpsters themselves, and then there's one food scraps container per unit. So if you can see on the bottom, the green is the location of the, of the organic trash enclosure, and then directly above that, where you see the, the pink or the maroon that have Xs, those will show, that shows on trash day where the location of the sixty-gallon trash bins will be located. In terms of architecture, there are five architectural styles throughout the project. There's a Monterey, which are, which has townhomes and duplexes, American farmhouse, which is townhomes and bungalows, a craftsman-style townhomes and duplexes, cottage, which is with the bungalows, and then prairie, which is with the bungalows and duplexes. So this is the location of all the townhomes. Again, it's a hundred and seventy-eight townhomes located within thirty-one two-story, four-plex, five-plex, or six-plex buildings. What we, this will be the street scene from Somers Bend as you're, as you're driving on the outside of the perimeter of the project. So this is an example of the Monterey architecture on a four, four-plex building. So you can see, you have the traditional concrete-esque tile roofs, second floor balcony, some decorative shutters like colors stucco. You'll see on this elevation, you have two front entrances into the four, four-plex, and then when you look at the side entrances, that's how you get into the two end units. So this is on the alley side. See, obviously, you have your garage, and then like I previously stated, each of the end units, that's how you get in. Moving on to the five-plex, this is a American farmhouse example. You do have the vertical board and that, that siding, vertical pane, multi-pane windows, and then the traditional porch with wood railings. Again, you'll see here, you have three entrance entrances that are off the front, and then again, on the bottom of the screen, you have the one entrance each for each end of the building, and then the top is the garage side as well. Moving on to the six-plex, this is a craftsman example. You have those traditional porch columns, big thick columns that have the square posts, horizontal lap siding, which you see throughout Somers Bend, and then also some bay windows. Then again, you have the side entrances on the bottom into those units, and then the alley view that contains the garages. Moving on to the bungalows, location of the bungalows is in red above. There's a hundred and two of those. They're located within thirty-four two-story, three-pack clusters. To show you what a cluster are, this, first, this is the view. This would be the internal loop road. So if you're inside the project and you're driving along the loop road that we talked about where the trail, the loop trails are, this would be your view of the project as you're driving around or walking around or riding your bike. So this is what a three-pack bungalow looks like. In red shows the three-pack. So what's unique about this product type is you have the two entrances coming off of the sale directly into each of the units. And then the third unit is actually on top of the garages in the rear of the three-pack. So you'll enter from the side, excuse me, go up some stairs, and then your living space is above those three garages, and I'll show you what those entrances looks like here. So this is if you're driving along loop road. Here's your decorative, your cottage elevation, decorative shutters, some brick accents, flat concrete tile roof. And then, like I was saying, so in that bottom right, you see the door. That's the door that you would enter, and then you go directly upstairs to a landing or then you get into your unit that is above the garages that you see in, in the top elevation. So all those windows and the, the balcony off to the left, that's all one unit. This is the American farmhouse. Again, you have the vertical board and that and siding, the classical porch with the red railings, and then with farmhouse, we have that style appropriate lighting fixtures, which really brings out the American farmhouse, the architectural style. So again, here's the, the third unit entrance on the bottom right, the garages on top, and then the living space on top of that. And then we do have the prairie, which has the hip roof design, a covered entry, and then a traditional first floor vertical windows. And then again, on the backside of the living quarter up on top of the garages. Something to notice on this, I'll discuss a little bit later in the landscaping, as you see in between the garages there, there's the planting. This is something we've really been pushing for lately on these type of alley-loaded projects. When you have this landscaping in between the garages, it really helps to break up building mass. So it's something that we've really been working with applicants towards. And finally, we have the duplexes. Again, you can see here in red above, there's ninety-four two-story duplexes, and they're located in seventeen motor courts. This would be the street view again along, this would be the street view along Somers Bend. So if you were on the outside of the project, driving around on Somers Bend, this is the view that you would see of the products. This is what the motor court looks like. So you have six units all surrounded by the motor court. They have the decorative paving in the center. So here we go back to a Monterey architectural style, the traditional second floor balcony like color stucco, like we normally see with Monterey architecture, and then the classical concrete-esque tile roof. And then this was if you're in the interior of the motor court, looking towards the back. So this would be the two back units. And then with craftsmen, the outlookers on the top of the building, again, the porches with columns, this time they have a stone base, and then on that bottom, you have that stone accent. And then again, the look on the back of the motor court for craftsmen. And then finally, again, back to prairie. You have a lot of brick on the prairie, the vertical windows, the flat concrete roof tile. And then again, the rear portion of the prairie elevations or the par, the prairie motor court product. In terms of landscaping, within this area, there is no minimum landscape coverage percentage. The landscape provided here, as you can see on the left, is extensive. That comes mainly in the recreational areas along the parkways of Loop Road, and then like we talked within the alleys and the motor courts. The plant types are out here. Do include sweet bay trees, fruitless olive, holly oak, bushmore and glory, red yucca, African daisy, and Boston ivy. We do have a couple COA revisions. I'm not gonna read the whole COA, but I will read the revision part into the record. So COA thirteen will be revised to read. It's for the, the middle of the CCNRs, condition of approval. The property is planned to be made subject to the existing declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions and establishment of easements of Somers Bend AA planning area. AA does stand for all ages, AA declaration, and the jurisdiction of the Somers Bend AA planning area association, AA association, as an alternative to the preparation of new CCNRs and formation of a new association to govern the property, the developer, at developer sole expression, may elect to record one or more supplementary declarations to the AA declaration and to designate the AA association as the association for purposes of satisfaction with conditions number thirteen through twenty-eight set forth herein. If developer makes such an election references to CCNRs and these conditions of approval shall be deemed to refer to the supplementing declarations and references to association or property owners association, and these conditions of approval shall be deemed to refer to the AA association. As such, if developer elects to record supplementary declarations to satisfy this condition, the supplementary declaration shall address and incorporate the requirements set forth in this condition. All these revised revisions to the CCNRs are for PA twenty dash one four five nine, which is the tentative map. Condition number sixteen will be revised to read is for the review of CCNRs. Will be added a sentence to the end that this condition for the articles of incorporation may be satisfied by existing filed articles of incorporation for the AA association. If developer elects the alternative described in condition number thirteen. Condition of approval number seventeen will be revised to read, which is the CCNRs and management maintenance common areas. This condition may be satisfied recording a supplementary declaration to the first amended and restated master declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions and establishment of easements of Somers Bend that addresses incorporates the requirements set forth in this condition. And then CO twenty-three will be revised to read. I'll read this entire one. Reciprocal access easements and maintenance agreements ensuring access to all parcels and joint maintenance of all roads, drives, parking areas, drainage facilities, and water policy features shall be provided by the CCNRs, and then added will be and recorded as specified herein or by deeds recorded concurrent with the map or prior to the issuance of billing permit or no map is involved. In terms of SEQA or environmental determination per section one five one six two, subsequent EIRs and narrative declaration, the project is consistent with the previously adopted Roy Flower Ranch Environmental Impact Report and the subsequent addendums. With that, staff does recommend the planning commission approve PH twenty dash one two one nine and PA twenty dash one four five nine subject to the conditions of approval that were both in the staff report and the revised conditions that were discussed here tonight. That does conclude my report for this project. I'm here for questions, and I did notice before we went live that the entire applicant team is here as well.
Thank you, Scott. Very professional as usual. Any questions to staff, starting with Commissioner Watts?
Scott, I'm just, I don't know how pertinent it is, but I'm curious. The difference between a bungalow versus a cottage, I think I know what a townhome is. That's like a condominium thing. And the other one, whichever that was, but I don't know if you have those definitions, but maybe you could help me through those, just so, from my own knowledge, I know the difference on those.
Well, they're, they're all for-sale product. It's, and I would, you know, request that Woodside did hop in here to more professionally answer the question. It's more of just the type of marketing name for the type of unit that you're purchasing. You can see there obviously are differences, especially with the bungalows, where you do have the third unit that's on top of the garage. And then in the, the motor court duplexes, you do have an, obviously a duplex, you're an attached project to another living quarter.
Okay, I, I don't think they need to go into it. If it's not a legal east-type thing, then that's fine. I think I could figure that out.
Yeah, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Yeomans.
I told you the questions. I mean, it's such a unique product. To my gills, kind of instinct to take it all in, but I have no questions.
And Commissioner Trulie Trejo.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, Scott. So yeah, the bungalow above the garages, like I've never seen that, so that's interesting. How that works. So somebody's actually living above three garages.
Correct. Like you, you take your entrance off of the, the end, go directly upstairs, and then your entire living area is that extensive, the extent of the three garages in the back of that product type.
So I assume that's for space, obviously, of trying to maximize the space. I just have never seen that. And then on the garbages, I think we actually talked about this before when you presented this, but so there's obviously no lawn care, that there's no lawn that they have to take care of or anything like that, because there's no green garbage.
That's.
It's a community green garbage, correct?
Correct. The green, and you're, you're correct on both your points, is they took the, the approach that the heirloom farms project took that we looked at last year. So that's where they got the idea for the organics enclosure, and you're, you're also correct, again, that any yard clippings, trimmings would be required to go into that organics enclosure, and that's part of the signage requirement that's in the conditions of approval that will be placed on those enclosures. That'll detail what does and does not go in those enclosures.
But they don't have their own individual lawns that they're taking care of, correct? Or they do?
You will have not necessarily lawns, but you will have these other areas of yard, but not a private, traditional, you know, single-family paseo build sole yard.
Okay. All right. And the last question I have is when you were reading the revisions to the CCNRs, like it sounded like another language that I thought maybe I was supposed to understand. Is, do I really need to understand? I don't know. Like, I was like, I don't know, have any clue what he just said.
So all, I can give the brief definition, and then Maricel can, can hop in, is what it came down to was there's already two HOAs out there. They did not want to create a third HOA by doing a new set of CCNRs. So by them able to join an existing HOA to combine it, instead of doing a separate set of CCNRs, they can just provide supplementary documentation that's specific to the density core project and then add that to an existing set of CCNRs, so we don't have to go through the process of creating a new HOA. Add that to an existing set of CCNRs. So we don't have to go through the process of creating a new HOA.
Okay, that that helps me a lot. I was like, what did he just say? I don't even know. So yeah.
Reading it, I didn't have any idea either.
Anyway, that's helpful. Thank you. That was that cleared that up for me. All right. That's all I have.
You want any last questions of staff? We go on? Okay.
Scott, can you go back to the picture of the whole project? And the bottom, the bottom left hand corner. There's a green area right there. What is that?
It's for drainage.
Okay. I thought maybe it's like market and discuss things.
Is the applicant wish to address the commission?
Before we go on with that, as a reminder. Any public comments that were received by email and mail. Prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email. Prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
And honorable vice chair, if you can just open the public hearing now that we're going to hear. Oh, I apologize.
I'll do it again. Just for safety sake. Let's go on from where we are then. Have we received any public comments?
I believe we have, but I think the applicant's going to speak first and then there's going to be.
Okay. Yeah, this is Trent Heiner with Woodside Homes grateful to be here today and thank you commissioners and staff for allowing us to present this project to you. We're excited that we developed this product with staff's input. To accommodate and anchor the sports park and the rec center adjacent to it. With a product that would satisfy the needs of Temecula and the residents and creating a viable, you know. Vital atmosphere of community tying in all the loop rows and the trails. So. Yeah, in answer if staff or commissions have any questions for us, we're here to answer that.
Anything else?
No, but other than Scott did a great job answering the commissions. I don't think we really have anything to add to that. He did a great job explaining all your questions.
Questions to the applicant. Commissioner Watts.
Not this time.
Yeoman. And Trudy Trejo.
Um, no, not right now.
And I have none, so we will move on.
Okay. We're going to check to public comments now. There's a portion that I think Stuart's going to jump in now.
Yeah, we're down to seeing no further questions or public comments, probably close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Vice Chair, if you may, there is a public comment that Stuart is going to now read into the record.
Go ahead.
No problem. I just want to point out that this comment does specifically mention. The high density three hundred seventy four units, which is the density core project, which we're discussing right now. However, the notice that went out. Actually mentioned all of the projects that are being reviewed tonight. So although it does specifically mention the one project, I think we can consider this as a comment for each of the. Items under consideration tonight. So that I'll go ahead and begin to read this. The comment is, as a resident of Temecula since nineteen seventy seven, I feel I have a decent historic perspective on the growth in Temecula. My family and I currently live on the east side of Temecula and our property borders Butterfield Stage Road almost directly west of the new sports slash recreation area of Summers Bend. I haven't attended a planning commission or planning meeting on any of the construction near us. Nor have I ever sent a letter to the city in opposition to any of the development around our home. I believe that is a developer's right to build the way they choose with the city's permission, even when I don't like it. But after reading this recent letter, I feel compelled to respond. Many years ago, the residents in our immediate area were told by the Ashby Corporation that the Roar Paw land would be used for homes on two to three acre parcels. And would fit in with the existing very low density area. Since then, that has obviously changed and now the houses that are completed and under construction have made it. Super convenient to share a cup of sugar or some eggs because the homes are only a few feet away. And they can just hand it from one window to the next. I just received a letter last week about reducing setbacks so that more high density housing. Parenthesis three hundred and seventy four units on thirty one acres and be built. It amazes me that Temecula wants to ignore the horrendous traffic problem that we currently have. And even increase it more by adding townhomes duplexes and three packs in our area. This area is only accessed by one road at a good stage and at certain rush hours, it's already lousy for traffic. I'm not sure if anyone on the planning commission is aware of the I fifteen north parking lot that runs through Temecula, but it gets worse every month. From the northbound border patrol checkpoint to the I fifteen slash two fifteen split. The traffic is horrible in the city. Temecula wants to continue to put money in their pockets by adding high density housing to areas that will not. Currently support it. Why doesn't the city planning and the council take a look at adding on slash off ramps south of Temecula Creek? Santiago into an on and off ramp and actually completing the date on and off ramp. I'm sure Temecula doesn't want to pony up the dollars to assist with these projects and just. Be an ostrich and pretend that the problem doesn't exist and just blame it on the state or Caltrans. This type of problem avoidance is not going to help with our traffic concerns. Hoping the problem may get better at some point. Is called hope paralysis and it does. And it isn't something that should plague the city. The city of Temecula needs to look to the future and not continue to punish residents with more and more cars that will. Further add to our already unbearable traffic problem. I have grown up playing Little League in Temecula when there was a ball field near old town fire station or the old town fire station. I attended Vale Elementary when it was the only elementary school in Temecula. I went to high school at Lynnfield High School, Temecula, and have attended church here as well. My mother and wife were both teachers here in the Temecula School District. I've coached in Temecula youth baseball and currently help out as the mountain bike coach for the kids through TVHS. I have been a proud Temecula resident for well over forty years. They've been involved in the community in different aspects and hope that will continue. Some of the decisions on specific types of growth and other decisions for lack of growth. That the city of Temecula makes have caused me some heartburn. I want to be proud of Temecula, but honestly, I've become less proud of our community and its leaders over the last couple of years. I realized that running a city costs money. I realize that running a city is a business. I realize the decisions such as approving way too many new homes, townhomes, duplexes and three packs as a financial decision. But as a financial decision that will not add to the quality of life for Temecula's current residents. I'm certainly open for contact on my comments. Sincerely, Mark Graezer. It's G R A E S S E R. And that is the only comment that I have received for these projects.
Hey, we'll see no further questions or public comments. I'll close the public hearing. And bring it back to the commission for discussion and emotion. We'll start with the.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Can we just wait to hear if the applicant has any rebuttal that they want to address with respect to the public? Like comment that was just made. Before we go on to deliberate.
Yeah, I appreciate the the public comment. I understand that through the years. You know, the specific plan has addressed a lot of the density and was already presented and approved. That provides the adequate infrastructure for the the project. And right now the project is is under those thresholds. So. We're well, you know, understandable and we recognize their their concerns. And we're progressing as, you know, our zoning and our allowances.
Okay.
Can I say something right now?
Well, I'm looking at my cheat sheet here and even that last question wasn't in there. So I guess we can do whatever we want to do.
Yes. So after the. Public comments are made, usually the applicant has a chance to rebut. And then if you have any question, further questions. You would be able to ask them at this time so the applicant can address them. And then if we're going to talk. If you're going to start talking about deliberations, then let's do that after we close the public hearing officially.
Okay, we can have then a rebuttal of anything that the applicant said after the applicant finishes.
Of the public comment. So the public comment was read, the applicant had a chance to rebut, but if if Linay has. I'm sorry, if Commissioner Trudley Trejo has any questions, then she can go ahead and ask those now. If there are any further questions that came up as a result of the public comment and rebuttal.
Well, I did have a, I don't know if it's a, I did have a question before and I actually asked Luke. Because I know that people that are living around there, I'm sure they're concerned with the density and with more traffic. And about what what the arteries were. And so I think on one of Scott's slides, and I don't know if that would help. This person, the public comment to see that it's not just Butterfield Stage. But it's Nicholas and Murida Hot Springs as arteries going from this project. Which helped me because I, you know, in my mind, I was thinking it was just Murida Hot Springs. Everybody was going to go on Murida Hot Springs. So I think that slide for me was at least helpful. To see that, you know, there's more arteries. I know, you know, obviously, traffic is a big concern in Temecula. And I know that we're working on that. So. That helped me to know there was more than one artery coming out of this particular project. And. So. You know, as a homeowner, I understand the public comment and the concerns with that, especially living close to that. So hopefully, as a, as the applicant, you know, can be aware of that and. And helping in any way that we can with the traffic situation. So that was just kind of a, I don't know, that helped, but it helped me to see that slide.
Anyone else?
Do you have a quick question? Can you freeze the eager story or Scott? With this higher density. Does that have a positive impact on the issues that we're facing? I'm in Temecula. In terms of. Speaking of goals set by the state of California.
Sorry, Commissioner Yeoman, do you mind repeating that? I don't know, it started to break up on us a little bit. Yeah.
With this higher density. I know we're facing issues for more affordable housing. This will be the piece here for people to get into. Because this higher density have a blast of impact on us meeting our goals.
Yeah, I'll take that one. I mean, generally speaking, yes, it's it's more housing. So it's going to get us closer to our arena number. And it's also. Generally considered closer to entry level. Homeownership options than say large lot, you know, large. Track home development. So generally speaking, yes, it's it's not dedicated affordable housing. I E, you know, coveted, you know, a project, a project with a covenant on it for fifty five years and restricted rents or restricted sales prices. It's not that. But it is adding to the overall supply, which, you know, supply and demand, generally speaking, is a good thing for cost. As well as the product type is, you know, for Temecula. Closer to what we would consider entry level. So on those two factors, yes, it is helping us with our state mandates.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Scott? If you can just clarify there, the applicant isn't requesting any higher density though, right? They're within the density levels that are allowed pursuant to the specific plan. Is that correct?
And furthermore, even with the density core project, they're below, well below what is allowed in the specific plan. They were allowed twenty and I believe it was eleven point eight five is what they're at. So they're, you know, not half, but just above half of what. If they really wanted to, if they could have, you know, stacked on stacked on stacked on buildings out there and gotten, you know, double of what they're proposing.
Commissioner Yeoman's is that, is that satisfied question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I think I can find out where we were when we got mixed up in that tomorrow. If that's the last of those questions. Stuart? Anything come in and let the.
No, nothing further has been submitted.
Okay, see no further questions or public comment. I will close the public hearing and bring it to the fact of the commission for this special and a motion. Starting with Commissioner Watts.
Here on mute, Gary.
Oh boy, I can't wait till we actually get to meet in person again. Anyhow, I don't recall, at least on my short tenure on the planning commission. A project such as this with such a variety of dense types of housing. Even Alter, I don't believe had this type of a. Like a sixplex or anything like that. So I think that's, that's probably good. It gives people more choice. And the market is definitely out there now. So I think that's good. Like Luke said, I think the price is is probably not what some people would like it to be, but you know, the market defines that. The other thing, Linay, our commissioner, truly trail brought up the garage thing and it dawned on me to. Three separate garages underneath the house. I hope they don't have motorcycle work going on or something like that, but I understand that's, you know, that's going to come with the thing. So I think there are a lot of interesting things that we can, as a city. Observe as this develops as we consider future projects. And certainly. You know, if that's going to be the trend or the way to go. There are some really neat things too that I'm curious about as well. The the unit with, I guess, the six, six pack or six plex or whatever, where they surround it. For lack of a better word, a courtyard, I guess. That will be interesting. It seems to me as in my few years on this planet, societal evolution has really. Evolved to the point where when I was a little kid neighborhoods, you knew everybody. Now you're lucky if your next door neighbor moves in even introduces themselves. So that'll be interesting to see on these types of situations, how the people interact. And once again, I don't say that in a, in a way to regulate that. But I do think that is something worthwhile to observe and and note. Particularly as it relates to future decisions on these types of things. And I'm sure the applicant. Understands the change in market and then is responding to that as well. So. I just want to make those comments because as I said, I think this is a rare, rather unique project, at least as far as I remember. So it'll be interesting to see how it, how it plays out. So those are just comments I wanted to make. Before, before we're ready to move on with with the motion. So. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Trudy Trejo.
Yeah. So yeah, I, I kind of go right along there with Gary on that. It'll be interesting to see. Especially with the bungalow on top of garages. That would not be my choice, but. And then just, you know, being. I think first of all, it's really exciting that it's building out there. Like it's been so many years to have anything happen on Roy Paw. And so I think that's exciting and hopefully. You know, being aware of the traffic and all of that will. It won't be as bad as the neighbors around think it's going to be. And so that's my only concern really is, you know. And so that's my only concern, really, is, you know, traffic from that many people when you are in a dense, you know, dense kind of area, what can happen from that? So I'm glad we have the three arteries, and hopefully, that will be good enough um to help everybody disperse. But that's my only comment. I think um it'll be interesting to see how it all looks in the end.
Assuming there's no other comments, we will.
Just for what it's worth, I used to live in San Diego. I'd give you on top of three garages, and you know, that's not a problem at all.
Anyone want to make a motion in a second?
I'll move that we adopt the uh, the resolution for the most simple item.
Can, can I just clarify? I'm assuming that's adopting staff's recommendation for adoption of the resolution with the conditions of approval as revised in the presentation?
Yeah, that's exactly what I wanted to say.
So there were revisions to uh conditions of approval thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-three that were read into the record that will be incorporated into the motion.
Please forgive me, I've, I've, I'm uh totally confused with all those uh, as, as Commissioner Turley Trayo said, the language on the uh, on the conditions were, it's unbelievable, but I get it, I get it. No, no offense, Maricela, so uh, yeah, but whatever you said, that's what I want to make the motion of.
I want to make a second.
Okay, with that, do the roll call vote. Commissioner Tolicio?
Aye.
Commissioner Turley Trayho?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeoman's. So motion carries four oh with the motion by Commissioner Watts and the second by Commissioner Yeoman's.
Okay, we have a motion of second and, as said, passed by four to nothing. Next three items on the agenda are separate but related home product reviews within the Roy Power Ranch specific plan. That will be presented in one presentation by staff. The three items are following. Read agenda items, and I'll do that. Last chair, the agenda item number three is planning commission number P A two zero one four one four. A home product review for the planning area nineteen of the Roy Ranch specific plan to allow for the four unique detached single family plans with four architectural styles on sixteen lots. Item number four, agenda item number four is planning application number P A two zero one four one five. A home product review for planning area two, two twenty B of the Roy Plant Ranch specific plan to allow for the four unique detached single family plans with four architectural styles and on twenty-three lots. Item number five, agenda item five is planning application number P A two zero one four one six. A home product review for planning area two one of the Roy Plant Ranch specific plan to offer four unique detached single family plans and the four architectural styles on eighteen lots. Staff report, please.
Thank you again, planning commissioners. This is Somers Ben H P R for the planning areas nineteen, twenty B and twenty-one, which are planning applications number P A twenty dash one four one four, one four one five, and one four one six. Uh, as previously stated, the project descriptions are planning area nineteen, which is P A twenty dash one four one four for four unique plans and four architectural styles for sixteen lots. Planning area twenty B, which is P A twenty dash one four one five for four unique plans with four architectural styles for twenty-three lots. And planning area twenty-one, which is P A twenty dash one four one six, which is four unique plans with four architectural styles consisting of eighteen lots. And total, it is fifty-seven lots. Again, this is Roropah Ranch. This shows the locations of the three planning areas. These are the largest lots, individual lots uh in Somers Bend. They are on the perimeter. This is P A nineteen. It consists of sixteen lots. Um, the average homes or the home size is ranged from three thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet to forty-seven hundred and seventy-nine square feet. These are a half acre minimum lot size, and again, the four plans and four architectural styles. This is a view across Somers Bend, if you're looking from the east um to the west. And this shows the location on the perimeter of where these lots will be. I believe this is showing fourteen lots, so you would have two more lots um to the left of the screen. This is P A twenty B, which is twenty-three lots. Um, again, the same how, housing square footage, um, these um lots are a little bit smaller, twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size. And again, the four, four plans and four architectural styles. And finally, P A twenty-one, eighteen lots, um, same square footage, uh, the twenty thousand minimum lot size again, four floor plans and four architectural styles. This is a view looking in the opposite angle, so you're looking from the west, looking east. And then along the south of the project, this is the location of those three planning areas. Bottom of the screen, you do see um the existing fire station, and then just about from that, you see the Woodside Homes uh sales trailer uh there as well, and are the construction trailer, actually. So moving into the plan one elevations, uh, the three architectural styles are Craftsman, Farmhouse, and Prairie. On the Craftsman, you see the board and baton vertical siding along with the stone accents. On the farmhouse, flat concrete tile roof and the board and baton vertical siding. And then on the prairie, you have the hip roof along with the brick accents on the home. With the plan two, again, Craftsman, Farmhouse, and Prairie, um, you have those vertical columns on the Craftsman with the stone base. Um, and then you have the paired windows. On the farmhouse, again, the same font, concrete style roof, and then you have the stone accents that are on the base of the windows there. And then on the prairie, again, the brick accents, which is a big part of Prairie House, along with the vertical windows. Plan three, um, we see our first appearance of a Monterey um style, which has the classic second floor balcony along with the stucco. Moving to the top of the screen on the Craftsman, you have the vertical columns with the stone base on this elevation, and then the horizontal siding. And then finally, with the farmhouse, um, you have the porch uh with the vertical railing and then the board and baton vertical siding. Moving on to the plan four, again, with the Monterey, you have that classic concrete S tile roof along with a very recognizable second floor balcony. On the farmhouse, again, the classic porch with the railing and uh board and baton vertical siding. And finally, on the prairie, on these larger ones, you have the vertical shaped windows along with wood trim that you can see on the elevation. This would be your front elevation street scene. Now, keep in mind with this, these houses are not going to be this close together as they are um larger lots within, in the development, but it does give you an idea of how uh they would look next to each other. With that, um, for environmental, section one five one six two, again, subsequent E I Rs and negative declaration. Um, the project is also consistent with the previously adopted Roropah Ranch Environmental Impact Report and the subsequent addendums. With that, staff recommends the planning commission approve P A twenty dash one four one four, P A twenty dash one four one five, and P A twenty dash one four one six, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes um staff's report. Again, I'm here for questions, and the applicant team, along with their architect, is available.
Thank you again. Uh, a question of the staff, starting with Commissioner Watts?
No.
Commissioner Yeoman?
No.
Truly Treehole?
Um, I don't really have a question, but Scott, on the on the exhibit A draft conditions of approval, number one twenty-eight, I was reading through that, the crime prevention through environmental design, which was really interesting to me, but um, and I don't know if this matters, but there's a word in there that's incorrect that kind of makes the sentence different.
Okay.
And it's at, it's towards the bottom, and it says abnormal users need to be, it says award, and it should be, say, aware, I think, of the risk of deten- of detection and possible intervention. So I don't know, that's a big deal, but I was just happened to be reading that, and, because I think that's interesting.
So aware versus award?
Yeah, it says award, and it should say, I think it should say aware.
We can make, I can, and that's a, that's, I believe, that's a uh police condition.
Okay.
So I can, we will talk with police, and if that change needs to be made, we can change that not only in this set of conditions, but the other ones tonight, and then we can change it in our template as well.
Okay, yeah, I just, um, that made kind of a difference in the meaning of the sentence. And, and I think that's pretty interesting, how they do the crime prevention through environmental design, so that was interesting. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Last minute. Okay, I will open the public hearing and turn it over to Stuart.
Okay, as a reminder, any public comments that were received by email and mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. Email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
And the applicant, I assume, is here. Would you like to address the commission?
Yeah, yes, hold on a second. Yeah, I thank you commissioners for this additional uh project. We were grateful to work with staff as well as our awesome development team to create these estate style homes uh that surround the community and offer a good move up uh product segmentation for those that are within the community. So uh, we're grateful uh for this and all the the work that went into to get these homes put together.
And here's where we ran into the block last time. Is this the place where we might ask a question to the comments of the applicant? Because that's not a much trip.
Yes, so this is where we would, if there's questions um for the applicant, you would go ahead and ask them at this time.
Any questions of the applicant? Start with Commissioner Watts.
I have none, thank you.
Yeoman?
Thank you.
Truly Treehole?
Um, I don't have a question, but I know normally when we're in person, we have a way to see all the like the colors and the different, you know, it's really hard, right, in in this? So I don't know if there's um not, I guess, not as far as voting for tonight, but I just, um, it would be really helpful if the, if we have that at, if you have those boards in planning, you know, in the planning department, something that we can actually look at even before the meeting would be really great, um, because it, even though they've printed it out for me, it's really hard to actually see what those colors are going to be, see what all of the different textures are. So that's just something would be helpful.
That's a, a very good point. We do have um all those color boards here in the office um for what we, how what we've been doing with uh Woodside as, as projects get approved, um, we take pictures of those color boards and then give them back to them, because I use them in their uh, as part of their sales. But up until um the planning commission, they are here in office for anyone to stop by and take a look at.
Okay, so that's good to know for next time. That would be good. That's all I have.
I have nothing. Uh, have we received any comments publicly?
Other than the comment I've already read into the record, I have received no further uh public comments.
Uh, having answered those questions, do we need to go through that? Like, we can always open it up for questions.
No, I think if no one has questions and um there wasn't any public comment, you can go ahead and close the public hearing. Right, so we can close the public hearing if no one has, has anything else they want to add.
Yeah, I guess that's what it's meant by going back. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And uh bring it back to commission for discussion and motion. Starting with Commissioner Watts.
Um, I like the designs, looks good. Uh, no questions.
Commissioner? Yeoman?
Make the watch.
Commissioner Turdy Treehole?
I couldn't hear Gary, what you said, Gary.
I didn't hear what Gary. Bad new questions.
Um, yeah, it's good to see that there, they have these um, these bigger homes, you know, on bigger lots, too, and that'll be nice to have that balance. And um just one comment for the applicant, it doesn't really have anything to do with what we're voting on tonight, but I know we voted on the recreation center before. And just a thought, we have a really big, growing pickleball community in Temecula. And so I think these new um communities that are coming, that are involved or that are being built would be awesome to kind of alleviate some of that, to have a couple of pickleball courts that are as far as an amenity for any of these communities. I know you're probably beyond that in the plan, but I'm just a, just putting it out there. I think it's um an amenity that a lot of people are interested in also. It's kind of, it's a big thing up, you know, so anyway.
Yeah, but Commissioner, let me comment on that real quick, is um, you, you are correct. Um, you know, they're a little bit further along than that, but we do have some other large projects that will be coming your way here in the future that are at a point where we can, you know, we've definitely been requesting dog runs and dog parks, because that's a big thing. So as staff, we can definitely request um pickleball courts as an amenity moving forward on some of these larger projects.
That's awesome. You can, I mean, you can put four on one tennis court, so it's really, as far as space, it's a, it's a great thing, and it involves a lot of the community. It's really inclusive sport. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, the, thank you for your comment, uh, Commissioner. We'll, we'll take that into consideration on our next projects as we search for them in in Temecula, so.
I'll ask for a discussion on the motions from my colleagues, however, as the commission's discretion, we can vote on each item individually or make a single motion. Vote on the three items together, and
Um, I will make
Comment about that?
I'll make a motion on the three items. Um, let's see. P A, do I need to read those? Maricela?
No, I think you could just move staff's recommendation on all three items with the caveat that you had wanted to make a revision to condition one twenty-eight, provided that it is appropriate um according to the police department.
Okay, so, so move. What she said.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
All right, with that, I have a motion by Commissioner Turley Trayo and a second by Commissioner Watts. Uh, do the roll call vote. Commissioner Tolicio?
Aye.
Commissioner Turley Trayho?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Aye.
And Commissioner Yeoman's. And motion carries four zero.
Moving on, agenda item number six is planning application number P A two zero one three two one. A home product review for planning area eighteen A of the Roy Plant Ranch specific plan to allow for three unique detached single family plans with four architectural styles on seventy-four lots. A staff report, please.
All right, thank you once again. Um, this is Somers Ben H P R, H P R for planning area eighteen A, which is planning application number P A twenty dash one three two one. Uh, as you stated, is a home project review for the planning area eighteen A for four unique plans with three architectural styles consisting of seventy-four lots. This shows where the planning area is located out at Somers Bend. Planning our eighteen A and seventy-four lots, home sizes range from three thousand fifty-eight square feet up to forty-two hundred and eighty-nine square feet. There's a seven thousand square foot minimum lot size, and again, four, four plans and three architectural styles. Uh, this again is the project, if you're looking to the west, those green lots are the ones we talked about, which are the larger planning area nineteen. This shows the location of planning area eighteen A, um, so these will share um a street on portion of the project with planning area nineteen. Hopping right into elevations, uh, we have the Craftsman Prairie and American Farmhouse. On the Craftsman, you have the shingle texture concrete tile roof, and then you have the traditional Outlookers um there. On the prairie, you have the brick accents along the bottom of the elevation, and then again, the vertical windows. On the American Farmhouse, the traditional board and baton vertical siding, and then the classic front to, um, back to front, excuse me, um, gable roof. We do have enhanced elevations uh within this tract, if you're on a corner uh of the project. So on the left, on the top, you have the standard elevation, and then on the right, you see the uh, the added material on the roof, and then the, the upgraded And then the, the upgraded windows, same on the bottom, you have the roof line element. The add a little bit of articulation and then the windows as well. Plan two on the Craftsman, the vertical stone columns, excuse me, with the stone base and the paired windows. On the Prairie, the hip roof, as we've seen before tonight, along with more of the traditional brick. And then on the American Farmhouse, the always, the always classic porch with the vertical railings and the board and bad vertical siding. On plan two, we do have enhanced elevations as well, very similar to what the plan one was. The upgraded windows and the roof material change on the top and then the roof line change. On the bottom, on the bottom one, you know, on the single story elevations, it doesn't seem like it's much. With the architectural element there, but if you're out there and you're within some of these planning areas, it really does make a difference on the corner lots. Just the, the smallest of enhanced elements that are added. And then we do have a couple more enhanced on the plan two, again, the windows and the material change. Both on the top and the bottom. For plan three, we move into the two-story units on the Craftsman. Again, more of the vertical column, the stone base along with the horizontal siding this time. And then with the Prairie, the flat concrete tile roof along with the vertical shaped windows there on the first floor. And then moving on to the American Farmhouse, the porch with railing. And then on this one, we have a complimentary farmhouse garage that really works with the rest of the architectural elements of that elevation. On this enhanced elevations there on the top, you see the upgraded windows. And then actually also in the vertical red box there in the center, that's actually going to be a pop out. I believe it comes about twelve inches off, off the building, so it'll really add on that corner element. A good enhanced elevation. And then on the bottom, the roof material as well as the elevation, the enhanced windows. And then finally moving on to plan four, you have the horizontal siding of the Craftsman along with the traditional paired windows. On the Prairie, more of the brick accents, and then you have the two-story massing with the horizontal design elements. You have that strip that runs down the top of, top of the building that really helps to break up the massing of a two-story building. And then finally on the American Farmhouse, the horizontal siding accent and the double columns with a brick base, which we have not seen. Yet tonight, so that's a nice addition. And then the plan for enhanced, again, the roof line and the windows on both of them. You can see the difference of what that makes if you're driving down the street and that happens to be a corner elevation. This would be your front elevation, street scene for planning area eighteen A, a mixture between the one-story and the two-story buildings. Or the two-story units. And then again, section one five one six two, subsequent EIRs and negative declaration. Because the project is consistent with the previously adopted Rura Par Ranch Environmental Impact Report and subsequent addendums. Staff does recommend the planning commission approve planning area twenty dash one three two one, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes this staff report. Again, I am here and the applicant team is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Watts?
No.
I have a question.
I'm waiting for Commissioner Yeoman.
Okay. All right, Scott, so just to clarify, so plan two, those are all single story? Plan one and plan two are single story?
So on this one, you do, you do have a good mix between the single story and the two-story.
Yeah, so plan one and plan two are single story, is that correct? That's awesome. We don't have enough single story going on, so that's. I know that Ron would be really excited. He was always wanting a single story, so yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
That was my comment. I also was highly interested in having some single story going on and here they come. Any other questions of staff? I will open the public hearing and pass it back to Stewart.
And I will read this again. As a reminder, any public comments that were received by email mail prior to this meeting will be read into the record. Any person wishing to submit comments during the meeting must submit comments via email. Prior to the close of the public hearing for the comment to be considered as part of the record. The email address where comments can be submitted can be found on the agenda.
Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Yes, he does. This is Trent Heinrich with Woodside Homes. Again, appreciate the opportunity. Grateful for staff and an additional our, our development team. We employ different architects in each of these products to give variation. As well as, you know, we were excited to offer more single stories with these lot sizes. To offer that are adjacent to the larger state homes and how, you know, sit up on its topography. So these are a great offering to the residents of Somers Bend and the city of Temecula.
Questions to the applicant? Commissioner Watts?
No questions.
I have a question for the applicant. On the seventy-four lots we just looked at, as well as the larger lots in the prior project. Do you know what percentage of homes you're going to build? That will be single story versus two-story as a percentage.
I can get it in a minute for the larger lot, but for this lot, it's fifty percent. There's thirty-seven of the seventy-four. Or a little, around fifty percent.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo?
Um, yeah, I don't have a question, but I, I'm impressed that your whole team is here and ready to answer questions. And I think that's great. That shows your commitment to this project and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
All of you.
And no further questions or public comments? Oh wait, maybe we got to back up to the public comment. Have we received any public comments?
You're correct. We have not received any further public comments.
Other than the comment, I know Stuart said this before, but other than the comment that was initially read, that is applicable to all three. Potentially, the all three project.
Correct.
Have we done that? Having all, I guess all the cameras, the comments have been read and the applicant has spoken. The applicant has every opportunity to rebut, but there's nothing to rebut. Are there any questions of staff or of the applicant?
Okay, no, no comments.
So there are none, and we move on to. Seeing no further questions or public comments, I would close the public hearing. And bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion. Commissioner Watts?
In the interest of greenhouse gas reduction, I have no, no, no comments.
Commissioner Yeoman?
Uh, no comments that I haven't already made.
And I have no comment that I haven't already made and hoping for a motion in a second.
I will, I will make the motion. I will make the motion to accept staff's recommendation to accept. PA twenty dash thirteen twenty-one with the appropriate conditions of approval. Is that okay, Maricela?
It will.
Yes.
I will second that.
And with that, I'm moving on to the roll call vote. Looks like you may be frozen. John, are you? Roll call vote. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Charlie Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Watts?
Aye.
Commissioner Yeoman's. That carries four zero with the motion from Commissioner Watts and seconded by Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
And that brings up the agenda item number seven and planning application number PA two zero one. There's that echo again. PA two zero one four six one and PA two one zero four zero nine. A home product review for planning areas seventeen A of the Roy Plant Ranch specific plan. To be, to allow five unique detached single family plans with five architectural styles on one hundred and fifteen lots. And a minor exception to reduce the minimum rear back, rear yard setback on twenty-three lots. From twenty feet down to a minimum of seventeen feet. We have a staff report.
We do, thank you. Last one tonight. This is Somers Bend Home Products Review and Minor Exception for Planning Area Seventeen A. Which is planning applications number PA twenty dash one four six one and PA twenty one dash zero four oh nine. As stated, it is a home product review for planning area seventeen A for five unique plans with five architectural styles. Covering one hundred and fifteen lots as well as a minor exception to allow for a reduction of the minimum rear yard setback on twenty-three of the lots. Again, here Somers Bend. This is the location of PA seventeen A. PA seventeen A again is one hundred and fifteen lots, the home sizes range from twenty-two hundred and forty-one square feet to thirty-seven hundred and ninety-five square feet. There's a six thousand minimum square foot minimum lot size in PA seventeen A. And again, the five floor plans and five styles. So this is looking. From the, from the east, so you're looking southwest on this. This is the northernmost portion of the project where it kind of has that arm that pops up. It's also the highest elevation point of the project and this shows the general location of PA seventeen A. Again, hopping right into the elevations, single story farmhouse, prairie and craftsman. The park farmhouse, you have porch with the railing, the horizontal siding. Prairie, brick accents that we've mentioned a lot tonight. And the flat smooth concrete tile roof on the Craftsman, stone accents and the shaped outlookers. There are enhanced elevations on plan one and it'll be similar to what we've looked at previously. The additional material on the roof and then the enhanced windows. And then on the bottom, architectural element there on the right side of the ele, the elevation and the windows as well. And then more of the same, another side elevation on top with the material change in the windows. And then on the, we have a, a rear change as well with the windows and the side material change. For plan two, moving to some two-story elevations on the Craftsman, you have the grouped windows there on the right and some shingle siding. Which we've not seen yet today or tonight. And then on the Monterey, again, the second floor balcony and some decorative shutter accents. And on the Prairie, brick accents and the two-story massing with the horizontal design element that we did see in the previous. Planning area to help break up that two-story massing. Plan two enhanced elevations, more of the, more of the same as we've seen tonight. With the material change and the enhanced windows on both the top and the bottom elevations. Plan three, on the Craftsman, on top left, you have the textures, flat tile roof, the group of windows. On the Monterey, the front to back gable roof as well as the vertical windows, windows that also contain the shutters. On the Prairie, the hip roof and the brick accents, which we've seen a couple of different times tonight. Plan three enhanced elevations, the top is a side elevation with the material change, some additional shutters, window treatments. And the upgraded enhanced windows and then the bottom is a rear enhanced elevation where you have the shutters. And you can see the differences in the windows. And then finally on this side elevation, you get some of that shingle that we talked about earlier as well as the window element change. On plan four, again, you have the Craftsman, this one has the full porch with the square columns. And the group windows with the ribbon pattern there on the top of the window. On the Monterey, the second floor balcony and the horizontal siding up there in the gable ends. And then finally on the farmhouse, the classic porch, classic porch with the vertical railing and the horizontal siding. Plan four enhanced elevations are similar to the plan three, the material change, the upgraded windows. And then on that bottom elevation, we also have some shutters being added. And then much of the same here on the other with the, the shutters and the material change in the upper portion. And then finally on the plan five, it's American Farmhouse has the vertical siding and a small porch with the vertical railings. There and then on the French cottage, which is being introduced here, you have the brick accents and architectural wood elements. And then finally on the Craftsman, there's the stone accents along with the decorative beams which are around the porch. There are no. Enhanced elevations with the plan five, and then this is the potential street scene that you see both on the top and the bottom. So moving into the minor exception, what the minor exception does is it allows for a reduction of the minimum rear setback on twenty-three lots. Those lots are one, seven, ten, eleven, thirteen, twenty-two, thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-six, forty-eight, forty-nine. Fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-five, sixty-three, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-two, seventy-four, one oh four and one ten. It'll, it allows to reduce from twenty feet down to a minimum of seventeen feet within plan here at seventeen A. Which is a fifteen percent reduction, which is allowed by the minor exception. That reduced setback will range from nineteen and a half feet down to seventeen feet. So not all the, the reduced setbacks go all the way down to the seventeen, they're varied between the seventeen feet all the way up to the nineteen and a half. What this does is it allows for the project to meet the specific plan design variation requirement. Of providing visual interest along the street. To simplify that, there's a ten-foot front yard building setback. But we don't want all of the houses right on the ten-foot line because as you, as you look down the street, there's going to be no variation of that setback. So we try to get at least a couple of feet, if not more. And then when you have a planning area like this that has some tighter lots, it's really became not possible in order for us to. Meet that design variation and to get the upgraded architecture like we've seen out there. So the applicant did ask to take advantage of this minor exception. Staff is supportive of the minor exception, so we can get that variation of offset of buildings. Especially as you go down some of the straighter streets, it really makes a difference when you're out there and you see the, the houses in real life. Terms environmental, again, it is section one five one six two for subsequent EIRs and negative declaration. And again, the project is consistent with the previously adopted Rura Par Ranch Environmental Impact Report and all the subsequent addendums. Staff also recommends the planning commission approve PA twenty dash one four six one. And PA twenty one dash zero four zero nine, subject to the conditions of approval. That again does conclude this staff report. I am here again for questions. And Trent and his team from Woodside in the architecture group is here as well.
Thank you, Scott, again. Any questions of the staff, starting with Commissioner Watts?
No questions.
Commissioner Yeoman? For Charlie Trejo?
Um, I don't have any questions. I, I appreciate your explanation on the minor exceptions, Scott. That was good. Because I had that question and I appreciate all the work on all of these presentations tonight, lots. And so anyway, I just, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions other than again, comment on the, the single story homes. I really do appreciate that and like to see more of the. And with that. I will open the public hearing and call for the applicant to address the commission.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Trent Heinrich again with Woodside. I want to turn a little bit of time over to Greg Hastings, just so you can say if you're. Yeah, Commissioner, this is Trent Heinert again with Woodside. I want to turn a little bit of time over to Greg Hastings, just so he can say a few words. From our development team.
Welcome.
Hey there, I'm Greg Hastings, the development director for Somers Bend. These are some of the. Highest lots in the community and I wanted to thank Scott and the rest of the planning staff for helping us with the minor exception. It's really going to create a really special area up there in the northeast corner of the project. And we had to work together to get this accomplished and it went very well. So thanks to Scott and team and you guys. The entire planning commission for. Addressing our project tonight.
Thank you, sir. And have we received any public comments?
I have not received any further public comments other than the one as Maricela already mentioned in the previous item, which was the first. Public comment that I had read earlier this evening.
Okay, I'll assume then all comments have been been made and recognized. And the applicants had a chance to rebut them, but there's nothing there. Are there any further questions to staff or of the applicant?
We'd just like to thank everyone for their effort in working to make this community a great place to live in Temecula. So we appreciate the continued work that goes into it.
Anyone else? All right.
In the public hearing and moving on to deliberations.
Sorry? I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said you can go ahead and since it doesn't look like anyone else has wants to say anything, we can go ahead and close the. Public hearing and move on to deliberations.
I will do that. I'll close the public hearing and call for deliberation and a motion and a second after everyone has spoken. So Commissioner Watts?
Once again, just to thank staff for the presentations. Nobody can accuse us of not having a. A variety of housing styles to choose from. That's very impressive.
Commissioner Yeomans.
I can agree. This has been a fantastic project to. To review and see what's coming into our beautiful city. I like it.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Um, yeah, also confer with my fellow commissioners and all the work that's gone into. And actually seeing something happen out there is pretty fun to see and, and. I like what I can tell that I can see. As far as colors and all of that and product, but it looks, looks good and, and hopefully. Especially, you know, with that, that, what is it? The northern area that we just voted on or we're voting on. Looks different. So kind of a different, adding a little different element there too. So I think that's always good with the. With the project that everything doesn't look the same. So. Anyway, yeah, appreciate staff and the applicant and all their work on this project.
I concur with all comments and would like to say at least. Two freeway lanes added to the project. That's not going to happen again until we need to. Do you have a motion and then a second?
I so, I move. Here, let me do this right. So this is item number seven. P A two zero dash one, four, six, one. And it's being recommended by staff and on conditions of approval, including. The minor exception.
Anyone else? Will you get him up a second?
The motion.
Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and move on to the roll call vote. Commissioner Taliio.
Hi.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo.
Hi.
Commissioner Watts.
Hi.
Commissioner Yeomans. And motion carries four zero with the motion by Commissioner Charlie Trejo and the second by Commissioner Yeomans.
And bring us the commissioner report. Commissioner Watts?
Um, just, just a quick observation. I haven't looked at the, at the zoning map lately in that area, but as we move into the general plan amendment. Process with the subcommittee, I'm going to be real interesting to see. The interaction with the commercial support for this facility or these houses. Grocery stores, gas stations, that type of thing. Quite a ways away, I think at present. So. I've looked forward to seeing the, the work done in that area as we move forward with the, with the process on the amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Yeoman.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing Jerry just talked about. Can I think back to the movie? Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. So I think that U S's project continues to be built. That commercial side will. Fossling to the area. And on a personal note, this being my. Last commission. I want to thank staff. And then. Like tonight was a great day. Recommend a good representation of how good our staff is. For a project of all these issues. But I want to thank staff. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners for making this a wonderful experience and one that'll cherish always. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Director Report.
Oh, can I say something?
Sorry, you can jump in.
Um, I just want to thank Gary for his service, public traffic and safety and also planning commission and. We'll miss you and Carol. You guys have been like a. What's the word? You're like Temecula, right? You've been here a long time and. I worked with Carol at the high school and PTA and all of that. And so. We'll miss you guys. You guys have given back a lot and that's great. And hopefully you'll have an opportunity to. Be involved in your new community. They can, everyone can use good people like you guys. So thank you for your service.
Explain good people. It's the last eight years we've been going to a site. For a week, this the grand gets the. Power of reverse in the project. So we'll be going on a weekly, two at a time. To see my son Zep and Melinda. Definitely stop by.
Okay.
And wait till we have a full agenda.
You got it.
Thank you for, thank you for being here and doing what you do.
Thank you.
And the community director report.
Yes, thank you. I want to go ahead and. Tag along to those comments, Commissioner Yeomans. It's been wonderful working with you. You've been a great commissioner, staff favorite. Always asked fair questions, which we always appreciate. But it's been, it's been great. And, you know, we wanted to, to, I feel like we've been doing this a little too much, you know? With Ron going and now you, but I know you're off to a new adventure. And, you know, you know, I've known each other for quite a while and, and been in the community for a long time. So it's, it's bittersweet to see you go. But totally understandable. And, you know, we wanted to make sure you didn't get out here without some hardware. So we got this for you. You're going to have to stop by and say bye to everybody here in the office if you want to get it. That's my, that's my little ploy to get you to come, come in and say goodbye. And, but I'll go ahead and give you just a read of what it, what it says here. It says. To honor your hard work, enthusiasm, dedication and dedication, contributing to a better quality of life in our community. Certainly did that. Serving the residents of Temecula from June two thousand and four. To June two thousand and twenty one. So you were appointed to the Public Traffic Safety Commission on June eighth, two thousand and four. And then to the planning commission on July sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. So. Quite a long time of service of giving back to the community. Obviously, it's, you did a gratitude. And all the staff also are very. Sad to see you go, but appreciate all the time we had with you. So thank you very much. And you're going to have to come on in to get this.
It's been beyond that. Well, maybe I'll send by.
Sounds good. We'll be here.
And Commissioner Charlie Trejo. I know you've spoken, but do you want to speak again?
Oh, no, I'm good. No, I'm good. Thank you.
And then we'll move on to public work. We have a public work.
I'm here. Yeah. So no report other than the projects I've given you in the past. I just want to say Gary will miss you and thanks for work. It's been nice working with you.
All right, that's. Probably more than can be said and more than can be said in the days that we have, but Gary. Yeah, you're, we'll be thinking about you out there in the land of the cowboys and. And the part that we all wait for is the adjournment. Do we have a motion in a second?
I don't know for adjournment.
Did we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. And so that brings us to the regular meeting of the planning commission. Be held on June sixteenth, two thousand and one.
And we're going to be on Zoom, Luke, as far as you know.
As far as I know, but there is an item on the council agenda this upcoming Tuesday to discuss. The, how they're going to handle their meetings and however they handle their meetings will be how we handle ours.
All right.
I assume they're going to be held in the same way.
Say again?
So that we assume we're going to be held in the same way as the city council.
Yes, I would assume that is correct as well. So it'd probably be good to tune into that meeting and, and just listen to the conversation. So you kind of know where we're going.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. Bye, Gary.
Bye, Gary. Best of luck in Arizona.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Make sure you have a cool.
Yeah, we will. We definitely will.
Okay.
It's great. Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye bye.
See ya.